John Cooper, Democratic Services.
Jay Bell, Democratic Services Officer.
Dan.
Daniel Parlett, Licensing Officer.
Okay. Thank you. Can I ask you to introduce yourselves as well, please?
Good morning, Chair. I'm Michelle Hazelwood from John Gorton Partners, here to represent the applicant.
Thank you.
And I'm Chris Harris, from Sheffield, born... Looking for Around and About Bars Limited.
Mr., say that again, please.
I'm Chris, and I'm from Around and About Bars, applying for the applicant... Application for the Wigan Penn.
Thank you, okay. If you can just... It's sometimes difficult to forget, but if you can use the mic every time you speak, please. And also turn it off once you've finished speaking, otherwise it interferes with the mics. Okay, I'm now just going to... Our legal adviser, just to lay out the procedure for this morning.
Thank you, Chair. Have you got a copy of the papers?
Yes.
Yeah, lovely. So the procedure is just right at the back of the pack, on page 42, so I'll just run through that. It looks a lot worse than it probably is going to be. So Dan, the Licensing Officer this morning, will introduce the report. If there's any questions concerning the report, they can be raised by members and the applicant at that time. There are no representatives for the responsible authority present. Conditions have been agreed and are listed in the report that we've all got a copy of. The interested parties, so we received one objection to the application. Numerous attempts have been made to contact them, but they haven't attended today. So we have decided to proceed with the hearing in their absence, given that there's been no contact from them. So what we'll then do is we'll just head straight over to the applicant and the representative to detail the application, provide clarification on the application, and respond to any representations made within the report. There'll then be an opportunity for questions by members and officers. You'll be given the opportunity to sum up your application, just to leave us with any final thoughts before we take the options from Dan, as listed in the report. And we'll then go into private session, just so members can take legal advice and consider the application. So at that point, we will be pausing the webcast while members receive legal advice, and then we'll invite you back in to give you the decision, at which point the webcast will commence again. The decision of the Licensing Committee will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and regulations made the run there. At any time during the hearing, members can request legal advice. So that can either be an open session, as we are now, or closed. Again, we'll just ask you to pop out, and we'll pause the webcast, and then come back in and report on the... Any legal advice given at that time. So the hearing is public this morning... Excuse me. In accordance with the regulations. So yeah, as we've said before, we are being live webcast this morning, and the recording will stay on the council's website. And I think that should be everything. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sam. Over to you then, Dan.
Yep, thank you, Chair. So this is case number 11323, on behalf of Wigan Penn, 4446 Campo Lane, S12EG. Purpose of today's report is to consider an application for the grant of a premises licence. So the application... The applicant is Around and About Bars Limited. The application was received by the Licensing Service on the 4th of July 2023, and is attached to Appendix A of the report. During the consultation period, the applicant has agreed conditions with South Yorkshire Police, which can be found in Appendix B of the report. Reasons for referral today: There is an unresolved representation concerning the application, which has been received from the following, and is attached to Appendix C, so the following is an individual local resident. There is one objection. The applicant and objector, who made a written representation, have been invited to attend the hearing. Copies of the front page of the notices are attached to this report, labelled Appendix D. So policies to consider today: That's the Sheffield City Council's Statement of Licensing Policy. Financial implications are outlined in Section 5 of the report. Legal position is covered in Section 6. And the hearing regulations are covered in Section 7 of the report. The appeal rights are outlined in Section 8, so Section 9, the recommendations. So we recommend that members carefully consider the representations made, and take such steps as the Subcommittee considers appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from members first on the report? No. Do you have any questions on the report? No? Over to yourselves then, to put your case forward again.
Good morning, Chair, councillors. As I've said earlier, I'm Michelle from John Gorton. I'm here to represent Chris Harris. He is the Director of Around and About Bars, who are the applicant company for this premises licence. We have submitted a small bundle of paperwork, just to give you a flavour of how the premises is going to operate, and its current state and condition, and how that can be very quickly turned around. So as initial... Yes? Apologies.
Been circulated. I don't know, I'm looking at Dan, because it was Jane, unfortunately, who was off last minute. That would be two seconds. She's come prepared. That would probably be helpful. Has anyone else?
What should it be?
Yeah, so it's just essentially the menu and photos of the premises itself. If you've got a copy, that would be helpful.
It was emailed out, but I don't have the physical copy.
Yeah, I'm just checking that. Yeah, it definitely was.
The bundle is really to landmark the site, and avoid me going into some lengthy descriptions about how it's made up inside, et cetera, et cetera, because you've got the plans within the report as well. So it is sort of hopefully for helpful information, and to be able to visualise what we're talking about. So the application is for a new premises licence. To address the point of this first: The Wigan Penn, in my research over the weekend, was first licensed in 1968, prior to that being offices for a solicitors firm. It has been a licensed premises for a long, long time. However, it has suffered one of the impacts of Covid, where the previous operator had a company operating the business. That company went into some insolvent state, which triggered the licence to lapse. No application was made to reinstate within 28 days, and therefore the licence was lost. So this is a site which has historically been licensed. It has lost its licence, but importantly, not by virtue of a review application by the Police, EHO, or any other entity, residence. So we are starting afresh, but I would hope that you would look at this application in the knowledge that this is almost a tried and tested premises, having been there for a very long period of time, and from the representations, not having caused problems historically. When we submitted the application, we looked back at the previous operation as much as we could find out. We mirrored a lot of the conditions which were on the previous licence. South Yorkshire Police wanted an update on those wordings, so we've agreed to the latest CCTV condition, obviously. The zero tolerance on drugs and use of the crack radio. The crack radio usage is really prompted, because previously, the latest hour for the premises was O100 on Fridays and Saturdays. My client's seeking O200 for Fridays and Saturdays. And therefore, the police wanted to make sure that in those cases, when the premises trades late, he can interact with the other operators. However, the premises is, and you can see from the food and the drinks menu, not being focused as a sort of a cheap range discount operation. It will be a cocktails wine bar. In the day, Chris is very much wanting it to operate to the business community, and also visitors to Sheffield, people coming to the cathedral, attending cathedral events. So providing them with a nice option, very close in the city centre, in an interesting building with quite a few little rooms, and where he can do different things in different spaces, and have different imagery and landscaping within the premises itself. He has historically worked in Sheffield. He's over 10 years licensed experience. He's worked at Brown's and at Ego. His passion is in relation to cocktails and mixology, and that's where the main focus is coming, on the premises. And he wants to open up with that focus and doing small plates. In the daytime, as I say, geared to the business community, professionals, and then also visitors to the city centre, and working with the cathedral, hopefully long term, to secure sort of communication and marry up with some of the events that are happening. So it's not going to be a discount venue, and he's hoping as time goes by to expand the food range, as he gets more on his feet and established. The two o'clock was sought, because he is aware that a couple of premises in the immediate vicinity operate similar hours. But also, what he wanted to do was avoid people wanting to migrate to West Street. So if he can have that later hour, it is his view that most of his customers will stay with him during the course of the evening, and then will go home at that point. Whereas if he was a 12 midnight or a one o'clock operation, there would possibly have been a tendency for people to say, especially at 12 midnight, oh, let's migrate up to West Street, where there's lots of venues with much later hours. Two reasons for that: Commercial, keep the customer, make a little bit more money. Second reason, it should dampen the potential for migration from the premises. And he's also got taxi ranks really close by to him, which will also help with the migration, the one particularly behind next door to the cathedral. So he's got good dispersal facilities readily available. The premises is over three floors. He's looked at where he would undertake his entertainment. He has sought live music as one of his regulated entertainments to be permitted. However, because the size of the rooms and the nature of the building, it's not going to be a rock band venue, because there's just not the space in any of the rooms to facilitate that, and get in the crowd, for want of a better description. So he's much more looking at duos, singles, acoustic sets, and things of that nature. And he's looked at the best room to locate that, and how to position that serviced away from the residential occupants who've come into that area in recent years. And he believes that he can do that without any noise breakout. That nicely takes us to the residence representation. We've been speaking with your legal adviser, and we're all struggling a little bit as to the actual location of the premises. Within the representation, she describes it as two doors down. Well, two doors either way, and you're in an office block, which we are all firmly of the view has no residential accommodation. Samantha has given us the number of the premises today, at 28. This premises is 42 to 44, which would landmark it even on weird road numbering, some distance up the road, and we think if you know that area well, more in the vicinity of Crouch. Couch, not crouch. Couch. So if that's right, and we can't hand on heart say we've got this right, because we've really struggled to work out where it is. It is quite a long way from the property. What that would mean, if it is correct, is there's no party walls through which noise can be transmitted at all. And migration would probably not be past that premises, because most people would take the easier route of going up by the side of the cathedral, either to pick up transport trams, taxis, and then walk up West Street that way, than go what I would call long way round, carry on on Campo Lane, then on to Trippet, and then up. That would be, I think, a bit of a circuitous route to get to other venues. So if that is correct, we would respectfully submit that her fears in relation to dispersal noise at night are very, very limited, and possibly unjustified. There's always going to be some noise coming out of a licensed premises, you can't deny that. But this premises has sat here for a long time, and as I've already said, we've no EHO rep, nothing from Noise Pollution Team, which would give us a good indication that, in the past, it's operated without any issues arising or complaints. In relation to antisocial behaviour, as I said, the police have only asked for a refinement of conditions. They've not looked in any detail as to concerns with the day-to-day operation, or worried that this unit would generate crime and disorder. I think, I would say, you've got an old building which we can bring back to life, an historic landmark venue. You've got a good operator, somebody who's got lots of experience, both in Sheffield and out of Sheffield, but knows the Sheffield market very well, knows the customers he's working to achieve, and what he needs to do. And the customer base, but he's looking for demand service quality. They demand a level of execution from my client, otherwise they'll not return. And that's what he's aspiring to do, and his previous experiences at Brown and Ego show that he's worked at that level of offer and service delivery. We have built into the operating schedule a condition that if door supervisors are required, they will be undertaken on a risk assessment basis. My client said that he will join the Unite Group, which is the best portal for information on the operation of Sheffield City Centre. And I'm sure he'll work with the city centre policing team, particularly around Christmas and the high days and holidays, about when he needs to have door teams deployed at the site. We're here for questions. Chris, can you confirm what I've said is correct?
It is correct.
Anything else you'd like to offer?
With the offering, the food side is limited to start with, due to getting someone trusted in who can do the food side of things. I do hope to expand in time. One, with investment of the kitchen downstairs, which is stripped. And two, with the quality of people that can provide it. I don't think there's any... My background is fully in cocktails. I can do kitchen work, but I'm not a chef. So it would be built on, and it is a very limited offering for now.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. Quite a comprehensive presentation there. We may have some questions, so I'm just going to invite my colleagues to see if they've got any questions. I'll go to...
Yes, I was reassured. I was going to ask whether it was going to be the Rolling Stones or String Quartets you're aiming to have. And it sounds like you're going to have a happy medium there. A really daft question, but very close to my heart, that because you're going to be offering quite a good range of... Now then, where are we? Teas and coffees and things. Are you proposing to have sort of cake with it? This is... Yeah, I know, I know. They are not laughing at me, they are. But if you're having, you know, if it's also like during the day, and it's a place where people will come and have coffee, and probably a meeting, whether you might also have something... You know, you don't have to cook it yourself, as you said, that just might make it during the day more... Yeah, thank you for the word, more attractive to people like me. Or are you just thinking people will come and drink during the day? Because I think these days, we tend to think of people, if they're going to come and have a meeting, you know, bring people to during the day, they're more likely these days, I think, to have non-alcoholic beverages. So I was just thinking...
If there is scope for it, then absolutely, you can double the cake by offering cakes. There's suppliers that I know, there's Dish and Axle Road that I know very well, that will be able to supply me good gluten-free options. You've got to be accommodating these days, to tick all the boxes. Either that, or go down the route of desserts instead, so...
Obviously, both sound very attractive. I just wanted to ask you also, intending to keep the name?
I do intend to keep the name. I might have a brand at The Wigan Penn. At the moment, we call it Beating Track, but I have thought of the book club social, but I'm leaning towards maybe just keeping it The Wigan Penn outright, and save any confusion.
Okay, thank you. I just have one for clarification, but I mean, I think you've touched on this, but just to further clarify, you're right about it being historically, you know, I mean, I've been saying to my colleagues, it's been there for as long as I can remember, Wigan Penn. For whatever reason, you've had to reapply for the licence, but it was there since 1968. It's quite interesting. Can you just outline again, please, for me? In terms of the new application, as you've touched on this, and you may have already said this, but in terms of the new application, what's the difference between the previous licence and what you are applying for currently in terms of, you know, is the live music additional, or is anything else in addition to what it was providing before?
Right, so things which we can be definitive on is the plans are exactly the same, so the footprint is identical. The Sunday to Thursday hours, I think, are identical. The Friday to Saturday hours, I believe, were O100, and we've asked for O200. In relation to regulated entertainment, I think it had regulated entertainment across the board for recorded and live music until O100. And I say that because I did not apply for the Crafton Door licence, but my partner in the office did, Mr Christopher Grunnett, and that is what Christopher would do. So I haven't got that information, and I can't quite look at that file for breach of client confidentiality, because I'm here for this one and not that one. But knowing how Chris would apply, he would go across the board. Now, when we looked at this, because we wanted two o'clock, we thought pushing two o'clock for live music was asking a bit much. And also, reality is that most live performers, especially soloists, duos, and that type of performer, will not carry on after midnight. They don't want to do it after midnight. If you've got rock bands and new bands, and you're going into that market, they'll play until the sun comes up. But the type of offer my client wants to do, realistically, he's not going to be able to book them for after midnight. So we put a cap of live music on the regulated entertainment of midnight. So we've got this differential between live music and recorded music, which we thought, knowing that there is a bit more resi in that area residential, created a sensible balance, and thought about their amenity, just that little bit more than perhaps the old licence did.
Thank you.
Sorry. Also, it says that you're asking permission for performances of dance. Now, is that having dancers in, or people swaying to the music that you are providing? Swaying to the music. I've always been told, and believe since 2005, that we should tick that box, because some, I think, there was some very, very early case law which said, people on the dance floor are always watched by other members of the audience, of the customers, and therefore it becomes a performance. So we've always just ticked the box, better safe than sorry. But you are not intending to have Moulin Rouge in the building?
No. Maybe Morris dancers, but not a plan yet.
Who are exempt anyway?
Oh, they...
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, we're getting some good stuff here.
Okay, thank you for that. Marouf? Thank you. I do have a number of questions. First of all, I know you were talking about migrating to West Street. I'm not sure I fully understood what the issue with migrating to West Street was, so could you explain that in a bit more detail?
Counselor, I'm not sure we understand what the resident was trying to say in her representation. She talks about noise nuisance. Let's get to her representation. My primary concern revolves around the prospect of live music, which we've addressed. Then I'm apprehensive about potential antisocial behaviour, antisocial activities. There is an expected noise due to our proximity to West Street, and she talks about West Street. The only way this site could generate nuisance for her, whether that be antisocial behaviour or dispersal noise, because we now think that it's quite some distance away would be people passing by. And the reference to West Street tends to give you a feeling that she's thinking that people would move from here to West Street. But as I said in my submissions, two things. One, by having the two o'clock, we believe our customers will go home, and not want to migrate to West Street. Two, now having identified that we think that she lives far further up Campo Lane than two doors down, which is how she describes herself, we do not think people would migrate that way to West Street if they wanted to. They'd go up by the cathedral and then walk on the main road. So it's a very... Because she's not here, we can't ask her. We're trying to mind-read and work out what were her concerns. Are those concerns genuine and substantiated? And/or have we answered her concerns in the operating schedule we've submitted? And we think we've ticked both boxes. Does that help?
No, it doesn't. So I just want to clarify a couple of things you've said there. So yourself specifically said migrating to West Street. And from what you've just said, it seems that you're saying the applicant has also mentioned about migration to West Street. So can I just confirm that the information you have says that the applicant has specifically mentioned migration to West Street?
So there's no mention in our application about migration to West Street?
Sorry, that wasn't my question. My question was, you've alluded to the fact that the applicant... Sorry, the person who's raised this objection has talked about migration to West Street. So I'm just trying to get some clarification here, whether at any point the person who has objected has said anything about migration to West Street? Yes or no?
No.
Thank you.
Because we haven't been able to talk to them?
That's fine, thank you.
Because we can't find them?
I'd like to continue, please.
Yeah.
Okay. How many customers are you expecting to stay past midnight?
Ideally, to fill the seats, so about 90.
Okay. And you're expecting them all to stay past midnight till two o'clock?
Not all till two o'clock.
Okay, so you're expecting 90 to stay past midnight? How many till two o'clock, roughly?
It's hard to gauge, but I would hope for about 50.
Okay, thank you. We've obviously already discussed the live music, and that's fine. You've also mentioned about premises in the local vicinity being open till two o'clock as well. Can you give me some examples of which premises those are?
It's the church house.
The church house is open till two, with outdoor staff on the weekends.
So just to clarify, it's just one other...
Possibly the closest one.
And how far is the church house away from Wigan Penn?
About a 22nd walk.
Metres?
You walk up the side of the cathedral, turn right.
So that would be away from where the current applicant is... Sorry, where the current objector is living?
I would say it's the same distance.
Yeah.
Okay. So my next question would be along the lines of what you've said a number of times now about where the objector lives. And I just want to confirm, earlier on in your submission, you mentioned the objector lives at 28, is that correct?
I have to look to your legal adviser, because we've never been given the actual address.
Is that correct, Sam?
Yeah, I checked with the Licensing Service before the hearing as to the address, because the applicant ought to have been provided with that as part of the consultation.
Thank you. So if the objector lives at 28, I mean, and the church house is further up the side of the cathedral, I think it would be important to clarify here that the objector lives significantly closer to your premises than the church house is. And if you do look at Google Maps, actually, the objector lives about a five to 10 second walk. walk from your premises, it's about twenty metres. So I do take some issue with you raising this a number of times about the objector living some distance away. So the objector has said they do live a couple of doors down and having looked at Google Maps, I'd say it's about three doors down, not two maybe, but it's still quite close to, to the premises. Can I also just confirm then that you've said that you haven't spoken to the objector, is that correct?
We have emailed the objector, they have not responded. Licensing have emailed the objector, they've not responded. We have never been given the residential address, so we couldn't write to the objector, which we would usually have done. So we have reached out in the ways that we could do. And until we walked into the anteroom this morning, we did not have the number of their premises on Campo Lane. So my client couldn't even speculatively knock on her door and try to talk to her personally. So I, I hear what you say, sir, and I agree with some of the points which you're raising, but we have done what we have been able to do, to reach out to that individual.
Okay. Well, my question is whether, whether, not whether you've reached out or not, my question is have you at any stage spoken to the objector, yes or no?
We couldn't, we didn't have the details. So no, we can't, we can't speak to them.
That answers the question, appreciate it.
But that, so you have to acknowledge that that is not...
I'm, I'm not saying that's your fault, I'm just trying to clarify whether you have spoken to the objector or not, and you've said you haven't, so thank you. No further questions.
Any more questions, Sam? No. Okay, that's the end of our questions. I think now it's, any, any question from offices?
Just to clarify, I think I already know the answer, but there's no outdoor area, is there, at the back of the premises? I can't remember.
There is, outdoor.
Oh, right, there is, okay. Like I said, it's been a while. Is the intention to have seating there?
Yes, there is.
Roughly how many?
Maybe seats for about fifty people.
Okay. No other questions, so it's back to you, just to add anything else you want to say, anything else you want, anything you missed out or any additional information you need to provide before we go into the private session.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, councillors, this is not really an application for a new licence in the sense of a whole new operation in a whole new location. It's to bring back a licence which has been well known in the city for five decades and in that five decades has not previously caused problems in relation to crime and disorder or noise nuisance. The dynamic of the city has changed as a result of the Covid nineteen pandemic and the premises has been closed for about a year, perhaps longer. And therefore people's views about the premises may have changed or people's views as to where they live may have changed slightly. This application does now have residential properties around it, which it didn't have in nineteen sixty eight when it was just surrounded by offices and courts. But we've only attracted one residential objection to the application. And that objection has not come directly into licensing, it has come via a councillor who's very kindly passed it into licensing. Since that point in time, both licensing and ourselves have tried to communicate with the resident to clarify what their actual concerns were and to explain how the premises is going to operate and the basis upon which my client sees the way forward with The Wigan Pen, hopefully sitting within licensing laws, promoting the licensing objectives in that space, so not causing crime and disorder and not causing public nuisance. He's a well-tested operator and he knows the Sheffield landscape very well. The police have raised refinements to the application. Environmental Health have not objected either health force and safety or noise pollution. And we all know that both of those teams are rigorous in their review of applications coming before them and are quick to raise historic concerns or problems. That is a very big indicator, I think, as to the position on grant of this application and that it is a worthy grant to come back before you and be determined as such. My client has thought about the changing dynamic of the town centre. As I said previously, we think live music was permitted till later hour. We've curved that back to midnight. The nature of his music is such that it will be less controversial, interventionary, disturbance causing than the premises on West Street, because that's not the type of customer base he's trying to attract. He has a nice little food offer, which as he said to you, he's seeking to expand as it becomes more established. And, and really this is a venue which in the week will be very much geared to professionals, office workers, tourists to Sheffield, people coming to the cathedral and be a lovely extra addition to that offer in the town centre. On the weekend, he would like to take bookings, he would like to operate later. We've looked at two o'clock because we think that that actually aids dispersal noise by not providing a cut off time where people might think, hmm, we want to carry on our night, let's go elsewhere, whether that is over to the Genting Casino, heading off left or heading off right and going to West Street. So we, we believe that by having that extra hour, we can have general dispersal, Chris has already told you, midnight ninety, by two o'clock fifty. Already fifty percent disappeared. So we have a much more gradual dispersal out of the premises. The resident's concerns, which she has aired, are difficult to answer because until we walked into the anteroom, we really didn't quite know where she lived. We'd looked at it, we'd looked at Google Earth, my client had walked up and down Campo Road and tried to work out which building could house that flat, which she's referring to. And it was only when we spoke to your legal advisor this morning, we got the number. And we're grateful to councillor Aru for his comments because he's actually had an opportunity to look on Google Maps, which we haven't, and try and landmark it. However, this premises does not have party walls to twenty eight, wherever it may be. So the potential for noise to disperse out of the building via vibration, et cetera, is nil. Is there potential for dispersal noise? There is always some potential. But now my client is aware of the location, he can work on closed times to make sure that people are told by signage, which is already offered in the operating plan. But his team on the door can encourage people to go straight up by the cathedral and not go that way out of town and pass her door. They can do that now they've got that knowledge. And he's a very responsible operator, he's, he's worked in high standard operations before, he knows what he needs to do. I don't think this premises will ever become part of the circuit. It's a standalone, it is quite isolated and its, its nearest counterpart would arguably be the wine bar on Trippet Lane. But again, that's such a big distance. If you're going there, you're going for the wine bar. If you're coming to my clients, you're coming for the cocktails offer. So they don't actually even still sit as, as a natural bed fellow. I would therefore suggest that when considering determination, you look at the guidance, particularly section nine point four two, I think what we put forward and worked with on the police on the refinement of the conditions is appropriate to promote the licensing objectives. Environmental Health have not asked for any additional conditions and I would respectfully submit that they don't see potential for noise nuisance out of this premises. And I think as per paragraph nine point four four, the conditions do achieve the desired end, that we've got a good lockdown on this site as to the nature of its operation with those conditions to protect the amenity of the people who are living in the vicinity. The police are the experts in their field on crime disorder as REHO and therefore I would take you to paragraph nine point twelve in relation to looking at the experts for their guidance. My client would love to meet the Abbot de Rose, the resident, and how he knows the number. If the licence is granted, I'm sure he'll be knocking on her door and trying to reach out to her and build a good relationship so that they can talk to each other going forward. But we, we have been a bit hamstrung on that front, unlike normal operations. I think what we can categorically say to you is this is not a late night venue, it's not a nightclub, it's no intention to operate like the West Street venues who do their job and they do it very well. He's looking to make something very different here, which may attract to different people and hopefully will bring this iconic premises back to life. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. We're now just gonna ask the licensing officer to give us what the options are and then ask you to leave the room.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So the options available to the committee this morning, so you may grant the premises licence in the terms requested, you may grant the premises licence with conditions, or you may reject whole or part of the application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, so we need, need, need to now go into a private session to deliberate and discuss. I'm gonna ask you to, to leave the meeting, then we'll call you back and you know what To talk to us and obviously we've had a discussion and based on the representation you made this morning, we're happy to grant the licence as applied for. Okay. Anything else?
For the benefit of the recording, so given that it's granted as applied for, nothing for you to appeal there, but for the person that made the objection, they do have the right of appeal. So following the hearing, the licensing service will send them the notice setting out the reasons for the decision and how the committee came to the decision. So the objector will have twenty one days in which to appeal this decision that we've been made today. But hopefully, you know, everything goes smoothly and we wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Okay, thanks again, Sam. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.